Call this meeting to order if you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, Councilmembers Gearbaugh, McClellan, Mitchell, Mayor Protem Tahar, and Councilwoman Dillon. From city staff, we have City Manager Campout, Clerk Royal, Treasurer Bennett. Is Mr. Schall here this evening?
No.
He is not. Okay, so Mr. Schall is absent. The rest of you who are in attendance this evening, we appreciate you being here, and if you'd be so kind to sign in in the back to my left, we would appreciate that. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted, noting that there is a revised agenda that the clerk distributed at each seat earlier this evening.
So moved as submitted?
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. At this time, the Chair would like a motion to excuse the absence of our colleague, Councilmember Seal.
So moved.
Moved by Mayor Protem Tahar. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. All those in favor of excusing the absence of our council colleague, Jack Seal, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We have three presentations this evening. The first is the 2017 Green Thumb Awards. Director Scruggs and Jody Roberts and our Parks Commission Chair, would you like to take the lead on this? We're happy to have you. Ms. McClellan, as the Parks Commission Liaison, do you want to join them up front?
Good evening. Thank you for having us. My name is Jason Shields, I'm the Vice Chair.
The microphone is not on.
How's this?
Better?
Excellent. Hi, my name is Jason Shields, I'm the Vice Chair in the Parks Commission. I'm here to present to you guys here tonight, the 2017 Green Thumb Award. So, it's a pretty exciting award. We have lots of fierce competition throughout the city of Celine, and this year we had 26 total nominations, and that is by address. We actually had several with multiple nominations for the residential category. We had four different businesses that were nominated, and tonight, the winners will be receiving gift cards. You get to take a photo with me, I'm sorry. And we need to send a big shout out to Celine Flowerland for helping assist us with the awards tonight. So first up, we actually had a tie for second place in the residential category. And the first runner-up was Nancy and Joe McCann from 653 Willis Road.
Are they here?
Oh, my. That's lovely.
Street. And in first place, Paula Allison and Barry England at 300 East Henry Street.
There are time-winnings?
Yeah.
They're here, I think, for how many years?
And in our non-residential or business and public spaces sector, we had the Bennett Street Studio with Lily Kittle and Rod March.
Anything else our Parks Commission representatives would like to add?
Congratulations to all of our winners and all of our nominees, and we look forward to carrying out this program again next year.
Very good. Thank you for your efforts on this project, we appreciate it. Congratulations to the residential award recipients and to my friend Lily. We appreciate your efforts to beautify our community, and congratulations on the recognition. We're going to transition now to the second presentation of the evening, which is our annual audit presentation. Martin and his team from Plant Moran, we invite you forward to the podium this evening, gentlemen. I assume you have a PowerPoint presentation, is that correct?
Yes.
Very good. Well, whenever you're ready, the floor is yours.
So as we're setting up, I just want to make a quick introduction. My name is Martin Olenek, I'm the partner on the audit. With me is Josh and Ellen. Josh is the manager on the audit, and Ellen was the in-charge. So essentially, Ellen did most of the hard work, Josh did substantially a lot of the work as well, and I'm trying to take the credit as well. So as the mayor mentioned, we are presenting the audit for 2017. I'm going to just briefly mention the financial statements, just the first page to you, and that's the report letter, and that's the thickest of the documents that you'll have in front of you. And we're not going to go page by page, Josh is going to go through the graphical presentation, which is going to cover the financial statements basically in more visual and condensed form. I didn't want to bore everybody here for probably about an hour and a half going through that eighty-page document. But the one letter that's in the front of the financial statements that does mention is the opinion letter from Plant Moran. The rest of the financial statements are the city's, and the opinion is an unmodified opinion, which that means is that we didn't have to modify it for any qualifications or anything substantial in the city's financial statements. So what that means is you can rely on the numbers, they are based on our testing, accurate, and you can rely on them for budgeting purposes, et cetera. So that's exactly what you should expect every year, and once again, this year, that's what the city received. Once Josh is done with the presentation, I'm going to go through the management letter, that's a thinner of the documents that you have in front of you, and then if there's any questions, if you wanted to ask throughout the presentation, or if you wanted to ask at the end, feel free to do so. And then also, if you have any questions after the presentation, after tonight, feel free to send us an email or give us a call, we'd be happy to answer those questions as well.
Martin, I think there's more of an organic flow. If you and your colleagues complete the presentation, and then at the conclusion of that, we'll entertain whatever questions my colleagues have.
That sounds good.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. As Martin said, my name is Josh, I was the manager on this, and I will be going through the graph presentation, which is the one with all the pretty colors on it. The first slide shows the general fund revenue for the current year as broken up by the different categories. As it has in prior years, property taxes do make up a majority of your revenues this year. The next slide shows those revenues broken out by the last five years. As you can see, property taxes have decreased a little in the current year, mostly due to the personal property tax exemption, which is made up for a little bit in the state sources line item there, because of the local community stabilization authority checks that came in to help make up for that loss of the personal property tax. Other sources increased for the Tifa contribution for the road project, as well as additional permits due to additional work being done in the current year, and charges for services are relatively similar to prior years. The next slide shows the general fund expenditures for the current year. As usual, general government makes up most of this, followed by public safety, which continues to show the city's commitment to public safety in that area in the city. And again, the next slide shows the expenditure is broken out by the last five years. General government did increase this year to $3,751,000, mostly due to the additional pension and OPEB contributions during the current year. Public works also increased by about $500,000 due to those road and street projects that I'm sure the construction has made very aware to you during the past year. As a result, the general fund balances on the next page are displayed. The current year balance was $2,830,000, of which part of that is reserved, and most of that, $2,114,000 is unreserved. That equates to, the total, equates to 33% of your total general fund expenditures for the year. So that has recovered nicely since the decrease began in 2009. The next slide shows capital expenditures by year. This year, the water and sewer came back after the big projects in 2016, and the general fixed asset additions increased this year. The next slide shows all governmental funds revenues, and again, property taxes make up most of that. Slide after that shows all governmental funds expenditures, and again, general government and public safety make up most of that category. The next slide shows the property tax composition for residents. Principal residents total of 47.63 mils, and non-principal 65.63. It's an increase of almost 2.6 over last year. The next slide shows the city of Celine's mills, and you can see that that's remained steady at 2.18 for the last several years. In comparison to other communities, the next slide shows that city of Celine is right in there with most of your neighbors, with the exception of city of Ypsilanti, which is significantly higher. The next slides show the taxable values as equalized. You can see that real residential property makes up most of the 425 million, with 286 million in the current year. And you can see on the next slide how that is compared to the state equalized value year over year, resulting in current year difference of $87 million, and a total of $6,365,000 if you looked from 2007 all the way through 2017. The next slide shows state revenue sharing. Current year shortfall from if balances had remained steady since 2001 would be 825,000, and if you had tracked from 2001, total cumulative shortfall then would be approximately 3.8 million.
What's important on this slide, I just wanted to kind of highlight, knowing what's been happening with your expenditures, so expenditures unfortunately don't stay at inflation or stay the same. So if you see, you know, back in 2002 and 2001 where your state shared revenues were, and given where they're at right now, it's a significant decrease year over year. But even take away the each year, if you add up now cumulatively from 2001 to 2017, we're looking at $3.8 million. So in that time span, we were, the city had to really look at the expenditures and cut back in order to be able to sustain the service level for the residents. It's the same kind of story for the property taxes before.
The next slide shows the Recreation Complex Fund. The current year revenue is up 11.5% to $1,577,000, and most of that is due to the increase in the membership drive, so there are more members in the current year. Expenditures are down to about $1.4 million, leading to a net result of $168,000 in positive. The water fund in the current year shows operating revenue increase of about 16.4% to $2,550,000, and operating expenses up about 34.2% to $1,804,000. Most of this is due to more units sold, about 8.6% in the current year, as well as an increase in rates of about 4.7%. Similarly, for the sewer fund, units were up 8.6%, just like water, rates were up about 11.8%, which led to operating revenue increase of about 16.3% to $2,193,000, and operating expenses up about 18.2% to $2,432,000, for an operating loss of $239,000 in the current The next slide shows the pension information. If you recall, this was implemented last year for Casby 68. The total pension liability is $26,450,000, that's an increase of about $525,000 over last year. Plan net position, however, is also up about $1,018,000 to $16,392,000, and covered payroll is down about $367,000 to $2,797,000 in the current year.
One comment I would like to add to is, if you look at the green bar that shows the total assets, if you compare it to the pink, and I think it's yellow, in the first bar, that shows all the terminated retirees. So essentially, you have the assets to cover the employees that used to work at the city, that are no longer within the city, but you don't have enough assets to cover the currently employed, you know, in the future to be retirees. The city is contributing the way it's supposed to be contributing, based on the actuarial analysis, and actually over contributed in some years in order to try and make up that difference. And I would say in general, you're probably doing on par, if not a little bit better than most communities. A lot of communities are doing the bare minimum, and they're struggling to do that. So I think you're definitely striving, you know, to go in the right direction, so I think that's really good.
So the last slide shows all the funds of the city, and the revenues and receipts coming in there. Obviously, we've covered some of them here, this just shows in its entirety. The total receipts this year were $20,164,000, which represents about a 13.6% overall increase from last year. And that's all I have with the graphs, so thank you very much on that. I will hand back to Martin for the letter.
So for the letter, it's about seven or eight-page document, I'm going to cover a couple of the sections a little bit more detail. So Section 1 is in response to the pre-audit letter that you would have received, talk about how the audit process went, if we had any issues, any disagreements with management, et cetera. This would have been, it's a completely separate letter, yes, that's it. This would have, the letter originally would have been sent probably about a month before the audit started, and this one is the response. So again, there's no disagreements, we didn't have any issues or anything like that as a result of the audit. I would like you to turn to Page 4 of the letter. This talks about pest adjustments, and then I just want to talk about those. This is very common in any government, and to be honest, for-profit businesses. As we go through the audit, we look at materiality and see what's significant to the financial statements. Some items may not be deemed significant, as we find any miscellaneous accruals that maybe should have been accrued, or any accounting that should be adjusted. And this is basically a list of those adjustments that we talk about with the management, and the city decided that, you know, it's not material, we'll pass on it, we don't have to post it, the statements are not misleading, and we agreed with that, but we do have to communicate that with you. The items that are listed here relate to attorney fees that were unbilled as of June 30th. However, the time incurred by the attorneys was already through June 30th, and the bills didn't come in until substantially after year-end, which we were notified by the attorneys how much they were going to charge, so that's how we knew it, probably before the city even knew, because we're required to confirm with the attorneys if there's any pending litigation, et cetera, including any unbilled fees. And then the other item, second line item down, is utilities. The city books the expense as the bills come in for certain utility bills that the city pays, so it's not water and sewer, it's utility bills, and general electricity, et cetera. And normally, it's just whenever the bills come in. And as you know, for residential, utilities don't charge through June 30th, they charge random days usually, so I know for me, it's usually around, I think, like the 10th of the month. So as the city incurs the payments, that's when the city records the expense, technically you should accrue through June 30th. So we looked at the potential exposure, how much the liability would have been, be about $15,000. Again, not a significant dollar amount when you compare it to your fund balance, to your financial statements, so it was not posted. The last item, the third item, is $95,000, so it seems relatively substantial. This relates to fixed assets, so technically, when you're constructing an asset, and you incurred some debt related to that asset in order to spend the money, the interest expense during the construction period before the asset is put into use, per accounting regulations, if you recall that, it requires you to record that interest expense and capitalize it, actually, as part of the asset cost. And I can tell you that most communities and most for-profit businesses do not capitalize that interest. They don't seem, they don't deem that as truly a value of the asset, so they elect not to record that as part of the asset. And the city elected not to record a part of the asset as well. If you were, then over time in the future, you'd be recording depreciation expense to knock that balance down, the value down, because it became part of the asset. In this case, it became part of interest expense instead, and gets expensed immediately. So your statements are truly not misstated or anything like that, and again, no significant dollar amounts, but I just wanted to make sure to address that in case you have any questions or anything. Page 5, notes, any other recommendations? I do want to point out, we're not supposed to put that in, this in writing, but there's potentially, this letter could have four sections instead of just three. The fourth section would be material weaknesses and significant deficiencies noted during an audit. There is no such section, so we can't say that there's no material weaknesses and no significant deficiencies, because we're not allowed to in the letter. However, based on the fact that there's no Section 4, we didn't find any, so that's always a good thing. For other recommendations, we are, as I always say, picky auditors, so there are always some potential improvements that the city can focus on, and as a result of our testing, here's a list of a few items that we have. So when we were looking at compensated time, and actually time cards as well, approval procedures, for time card approvals, we didn't notice, in some cases, even though the time cards were approved, we didn't notice the documentation of showing, okay, who approved it, and the time of, the date of when it was approved. So one of our recommendations was, let's make sure that the documentation was in there, even if it was via email, that would just kind of button up things a little bit more. And then since then, we've had discussions with the city, and that process has been implemented. And then a compensated time, we noticed, actually, the city manager's time wasn't reviewed, the calculation wasn't reviewed. However, during our audit procedures, we reviewed it to make sure everything was fine, and it was, but we would just encourage the city to have that process in place as well, just to make sure that there was no issues or anything like that. But again, based on our testing, we didn't find any issues whatsoever. Unrecorded liabilities, so we talked about the attorney fees and the utilities already, and the pest adjustments on the previous page. General ledger, we noticed a couple of balances, and these were very insignificant balances, but they were the same balance year after year, for a couple of years running now. I believe one was an inventory balance, there was another one, and I forget what the number was, but the balances were the same. What we would encourage the city to do is just review the balances from year to year, and make sure that those balances truly reflect what's in the account. Most likely, it is within a certain percentage that it's accurate, however, I would just recommend, basically reconciling the balances on a regular basis, at least annually. Physical security and prevention of data loss for your IT, the server computer room, we would recommend having sensors for water, and then racks to put the servers on, and my understanding is that has been done, or it's in process of being done, but that was one of our recommendations as we were in the server room. And then fund balance policy, right now, the fund balance policy is to be between 15% and 20% of expenditures. The undesignated or unassigned fund balance was actually higher than that as of June 30th. We have a recommendation to take a look at it, and maybe assign a portion of that balance or designate a portion of the balance for something specific for future use. My understanding is there's something on the agenda as well that the city has, that it will be assigned for potential liabilities in the future. And then on Page 6, we start legislative and informational items. This would be general items that are occurring at the state level, or items that could affect potentially the city. So outside of the numbers, outside of the audit, just things that could affect the city as well. So a couple of things that I wanted to highlight, I wasn't going to go through page by page on this, but a few items. One is the economic downturn, the very first item. Given what's happened a few years back with the recession, and some people call it much more than just a recession, but if you look at it, the property taxes and state share revenues haven't recovered, and it will take quite some time to recover. Just given Proposal A, and how slow the recovery really takes place as a result of being capped by being able to only assess taxes on the taxable value versus the state equalized value. So the recovery is very slow in most communities, if you just look at, if you project out inflation to be about 2% or 3%, which is actually much higher than the inflation has been in the last couple of years, it can take 15 to 20 years just to get back to the dollar amounts that you were getting before the recession. So it does take quite some time, unfortunately, and given that, I do think that the city has done an outstanding job of cutting back the expenses in order to be able to still provide the services that you need to provide to your residents. However, the recovery period is going to be a very long time, so I just wanted to point that out. Couple other things, F-65 online filing, it is now required to be done purely online, so I just wanted to point that out. And then the main item that I really wanted to talk about is on Page 7, and I know the city council has talked about it, and I know I attended one of the meetings too, about the new other post-employment benefit standard that's coming out. So a couple of years ago, we had what's called Casby 68, put the pension expenses, accrued liability on the face of the statements in the government-wide statements. The same thing's happening with post-employment benefits starting next year. It is a substantial liability, and based on my understanding, portion of that extra, or the excess over 20% of fund balance is going to be potentially put towards that. I think that that's a great idea, just given the funding levels, et cetera, I think it's a good thing to look forward to. I think the city, if you look at the overall financial position on a current basis, on your fund balance, et cetera, I think the city's doing very well. If you look at long-term, those liabilities are significant. And I, the city's not any different than most communities in the state of Michigan, most communities are actually, to be honest, much less funded, but still, that liability's significant, and it's going to be appearing on your statements starting next year. So it's an important thing to consider and start planning for before many years to come. So that's all I had on the audit. I do want to thank the city, once again, for just helping us out through the process. I know it's never easy, having a few folks from Plant Moran, bugging, you know, the staff and everything on a daily basis, on top of the normal responsibilities that are upon the staff. And it's like, you know, a full week already, and then all of a sudden, everybody comes in and starts asking questions. So we definitely appreciate the help, the city was, once again, well-prepared for the audit, and definitely made our jobs much easier. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Martin. Before I entertain any questions, Treasurer Bennett or Deputy Treasurer McDonough, do you have anything that you'd like to add or make comment on? No, Ms. Bennett? Ms. McDonough? No, you're good? Excellent. Well, we appreciate your cooperation and your efforts to assist our auditors. Martin, you and your team always do an outstanding job, and we appreciate your attendance this evening. There were a number of positive and encouraging items that you highlighted in the audit report, but also some things that we need to be focused on and attentive to in the ensuing years. So, thank you again. Let me start down at the opposite end of the dais. Ms. Mitchell, do you have any questions for staff or for our auditors?
No, sir.
Very good. Ms. McClellan?
None for me, thank you.
Mr. Gearbaugh?
No, as always, I appreciate your great job that you guys do, and keep us, keeping us informed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Tahar?
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Dillon?
I just have one comment, which is on Section 2 on your recommendations, it was about the compensated time, and it's more for the city. We've got policies and procedures now in place that cover these. Awesome. Thank you.
Anything else you'd like to add?
That's it, thank you very much.
Gentlemen, thank you. Have a wonderful rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on now to the third and final presentation this evening. It's a Washtenaw County, it's a update or overview on the upcoming Washtenaw County millage, and we have County Administrator Greg Dill, as well as the Washtenaw County Board of Commission Chair Andy Labarre here. Gentlemen, we welcome you this evening, the floor is yours. Do you have a PowerPoint?
Mayor, we do not.
Okay.
We do not.
Then Chase, gentlemen, before you begin, yeah, thank you. Then Chase, gentlemen, before you begin, yeah, thank you. Move back. Chairman Labarre, Administrator Dill, the floor is yours.
Mayor, first off, let me just take a quick note to say that I'm impressed with the way you run a meeting, and I'm probably the only person in the room that looks, looks at that sort of thing with envy, but well done, sir. And to you and the rest of the city council, thank you. My name is Andy Labarre. I represent District Seven, which is basically the eastern half of the city of Ann Arbor. I have the privilege of serving this term as Chair of the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners. Greg Dill, our county administrator, is with us tonight. Many of you already know Mr. Dill. Like Mr. Campbell, he has a distinguished career in public service, and we both appreciate very much the chance to speak with you tonight, to tell you just a bit about the village, its importance, and specifically, how it relates to the city of Celine. And Mayor, with your permission or indulgence, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know Administrator Dill would too, at the end of the remarks here, should you see, should you see a need for that. So let me give just a brief overview. In July of this year, the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners voted to put a one-mill eight-year ask before Washtenaw County voters. This is absolutely the most complex village question we've had in Washtenaw County. I would argue till I'm blue in the face, it is matched only in its complexity by the needs it seeks to address. This mill, this village ask seeks to do three things. Helps to address some of our public safety concerns and challenges that we face, both as a county as an entity, and the communities that make up that county that contract with the Washtenaw County Sheriff's Office. It seeks, and this is probably of paramount importance, to address the mental health challenges that we, as a broader community and county specifically, face. I don't want to run through the litany of issues, you are all well aware of it, the city of Celine and its residents sadly, like every other municipality in this county, face those challenges on a day-to-day basis. You understand the, the funding situation we face, and frankly, the shortfalls we're up against. And then the third component of the village is a return portion to the seven municipalities in Washtenaw County that already have their own police department. Celine falls into this category, as does the city of Ann Arbor, city of Ypsilanti, Pittsfield Township, Northfield, city of Mylan, as, as well as a few others. And this has been the village component that has drawn the most consternation and confusion in terms of the overall proposal. So in a nutshell, we have one mill, which raises roughly $15.4 million before voters. We split it up 38% or 5.8 million to go to public safety. We have 38%, also 5.8 million, that will go towards community mental health. And the remaining 24%, we split up between those seven municipalities on a population basis. So for the city of Celine, if this village passes, there will be an annual $160,000 roughly return, rebate, refund, whatever it is you want to call it, to the city's general fund. We do not, as a county board of commissioners, have the legal authority under Michigan law to dictate to you as a body what to do with that money. That is ultimately going to be a policy choice that you and the other seven, excuse me, the other six municipalities will have to make on your own end. But that money will be returned to you on an annual basis for the life of the village, which is eight years. The thinking with that is to try and accommodate for the fact that you already, through the planning the city's had in place, have a police department. And the services we are seeking to fund through the sheriff's office have a component that you, as a municipality with your own police department, will benefit from directly. Services like jail, SWAT, aquatics, corrective services, those things that even though you have a police department, the sheriff's office takes care of. But we also understand that you and other municipalities have your own police department. And this village ask would fund some activities that you already take on your own shoulders and do yourself. So that rebate portion is designed to try and ameliorate the challenges you would face having that tax money raised, and to give you additional flexibility to try and meet either the direct challenges of public safety or mental health, or frankly, the challenges that you as a body see fit to meet for your city. Let me breeze through quickly the public safety component. In a nutshell, police costs as an industry have gone up at a rate that municipalities cannot meet, that counties cannot meet, that states cannot meet. As an industry, those costs are rising. At the same time, the need for public safety services is not diminishing, it's probably increasing. That's a, that is a paradigm that will be unsustainable in the future. We have a tremendous sheriff who's done a great job for eight and a half years, holding the line on increases. We think with this village, should it pass, we can continue to provide that level of service at frankly, an amount that municipalities can afford. You have companion communities like Village of Manchester, who spend 70% of their general fund on public safety. So this is not, for many municipalities, an insignificant challenge for what they face at the local level. In terms of mental health, council, Mayor, if I may, here's the deal. We face an increasing demand that sadly continues to move in that direction, and diminished resources, both in terms of the aggregate number we receive, and the policies that the state attaches to how we can spend that money. So we have less money with more constraints to meet greater need. So this village is a comprehensive effort to try and address those twin and related challenges of public safety and mental health, in a way that is significant and sufficient to try and help us get back frankly, on solid footing. And to return to all of you, some level of this village, so that you can make the decisions on your end that you feel are best for the city. Like any other good local elected official, I've probably spoken too long and with too much density, but I would be happy to answer any questions, or cede the floor to Administrator Dill, if you have any specific questions for him.
Very good. Well, Chairman Labarre, you did take a, a complex issue, and not only were you specific, and not only did you provide detail, but I think you made it quite accessible. So thank you for that. I'm actually starting at the opposite end of the dais. Councilwoman Dillon, do you have questions for the Chair of the Washtenaw County Board of Commissioners, or for Administrator Dill?
Not at this time, thank you.
Very good. Mayor Protem Tahr?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Geerbaugh?
Not at this time.
Okay. Councilwoman McLallan?
No questions, just a comment, I guess. Where would citizens contact you if they themselves have questions, or just at the Washtenaw County office? Do you have a contact number?
My, my contact number and email is up on the ewashtenaw.org website, and they are welcome to contact me or any of my eight colleagues, including your own Alicia Ping, at any time. Please don't tell Alicia I said that.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Sure, I did have a question. Sorry.
Please, tell them.
So thank you, Mr. Labarre, Mr. Dill, for being here. So the mental health portion I'm interested in, I'm a believer in, in investing in those, those resources. So that return would come back to us, and then there's, there's no stipulations as to how we would support our mental health needs, or can you talk about the coordination of effort a little bit?
Of course, and that, and that's an excellent question. So $5.8 million will be used, per the ballot language and accompanying ordinance, for public safety. $5.8 will be used for mental health countywide. The, the big focus there, things like jail services, but really, services to stabilize people, services to get our capacity with, with our mental health apparatus back up to frankly, what we had pre-state cuts and pre-growth in need, and to provide some stabilization funds and crisis funds, so that we have the resources in place for the challenges we see. The return portion of the village, as a, as a total percent, that's 24%, so that raises almost $3.7 million for the seven municipalities in Washtenaw County. Of those seven, the city of Celine has about 4.4% in total. And so that $162,000 that would be coming back, that's unrestricted, we cannot restrict it per state law.
I see. Okay, for some reason, I heard the two hooked together. So is there, is there a plan that's available as far as details? You know, you, you mentioned enforcement, that, that there would be some effort made through jails, but also some, some efforts to beef up local mental health facilities. Do you have a, a plan?
We, we do, we do. This, this, this past meeting, we passed the final version of a governing ordinance for this village. That provides the, the greater detail. I will be candid with all of you, the, the challenges we face in mental health are evolving, as you all know. And so this, this ordinance provides a framework of how we plan to address these, these challenges, as well as building in a committee structure to allow us frankly, to evaluate how we're doing, garner citizen input, and be able to sadly respond to new challenges or, or growing long-term challenges over the eight-year life of the village. So it, it has some level of detail to provide a, a broad, a broad map of how we get there, but we'll have to be flexible as we go.
So because I think people are going to be asking me, you know, why should we vote for this, and so having those details will help me, and so that information, the, the item that was passed will be on the, the ewashtenaw website?
Yes, and we, we do, in, in full disclosure, I'm one of the co-chairs of the campaign that is in support of this village. We do have a website up there. I won't promote it in this meeting, but I, I can make that available too. And so there's, there's a number of places, as well as some groups that have supported the village, that provide their input in terms of why they think it's important. But yes, the details are available on ewashtenaw.org, under the Board of Commissioners tab.
Okay, all right. No more questions?
Very good. One last opportunity for questions for our guests. Chairman Labarre, Administrator Dill, we appreciate your time. Of course, we, as a group, will continue to, to discuss the issue, and we hope that our community members do as well. And of course, I encourage all of you in the audience, and those that may be reading about this meeting at a later date or watching at home, to please access some of the resources that the chairman indicated, and make yourself informed about this issue, because it is critically important to our community specifically, but also to the county as a whole. Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Wonderful evening.
Thank you.
That concludes the presentation portion of tonight's agenda. We move on to citizen comments on agenda items under the Open Meetings Act. Any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess. In regards to the audit presentation, although it was simply put, I was hoping that we could, as a council, tell the public that wants to go into detail, that this will be put on the website, the city website, for if anyone really wants to look at all of it. And Martin said that was true also. As far as the Washtenaw County village, and the city of Celine having its own police department, we kind of get to pay two taxes. We pay for our Celine police force, and we pay for the county police force. And I'm wondering how many times the city has been called to assist the county for help or in lieu of them coming out. As far as, that is basically my concern, in that I notice we've had other things that have been generally funded, and they go in different areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there additional comments on agenda items? Please.
We have some students here from the Celine Middle School French Exchange Program.
Wonderful.
Yeah, venue?
Mayor Brian Marl, city of Celine, council members, staff and citizens. My name is Blake Coy, and I'm an eighth grade student. With me tonight, from the Celine Middle School French Exchange Program are...
Carter Harris.
Gillian Brilliant.
On behalf of the Celine Middle School French Exchange Program, we respectfully ask you to please consider hanging the French flags as a gesture of goodwill throughout the city of Celine during the period of Celine Middle School French Exchange. They are hung at the four corners of Celine, Ann Arbor, and Michigan Ave. French students will visit on October 21st through November 4th. We have approximately 14 students and one teacher coming to visit Celine from the town of Romalie, located an hour south of Paris, France. We will have someone drop the four flags off next week to your Department of Public Works. The city of Celine has graciously done this in the past, and it has been very well received by our visiting students and faculty from France. We thank you so much for your consideration. Should you have any questions concerning the Celine Middle School French Exchange Program, please do not hesitate to contact our French teacher. This is Andrea Zepour at Celine Middle School. We are looking forward to a wonderful visit and showcasing the city of Celine and its wonderful attributes to our visiting French students. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
On the behalf of what they just said, I think it's wrong that we fly another flag in our city. We fly our American flag, and that's the only one we should be flying. If these French students do fly it, they should be banned from being in school in this area. If they want to fly their flags, fly them in different towns, like Ann Arbor, Detroit, places like that. This town is losing a lot of people. I am thinking about moving out of it. It's called Celine-Hash-Anne Arbor, still, to end my thought. And if you guys cannot get it right, I'm voting each and one of you guys out of your seats. Thank you very much.
Any additional citizen, please?
Good evening. I'm Emily Rogers. I am the owner of Workout One in downtown Celine. Right now, I currently operate at 118 East Michigan Avenue. I'm sure all of you have seen my clients pulling tires and, and running around in downtown Celine. The, and the building I was in was recently sold, and the new owners do not want tenants, so I am forced to look elsewhere. And I am applying tonight for a special use permit for the building at 1408, I believe it is, East Michigan Avenue. So I encourage you to vote yes, to approve the special use land permit for my business to continue. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Emily. Our library director, please.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Mary Ellen Mulcrone, Library Director at Celine District Library. I want to thank you for presenting a proclamation in recognition, excuse me, in recognition of National Friends of Libraries Week, which is October 15th to the 21st. I also would like to thank the Friends of Celine District Library for all that they do for the library, and in turn, for the community. The Friends are most obvious in their work at the Corner Bookshop, but they do a lot of work behind the scenes, sorting through all of the donations and getting things ready for, to have a, a nice selection in the bookshop. And the proceeds from those sales are used to benefit the library in many ways. For instance, they support us with funds for the annual summer reading program, they help us to purchase special equipment and furnishings and other things. They, they do other things for the library, such as volunteering at programs, special programs, and attending community events, representing the library in that way, and advocating for the library. So in short, we really need our Friends, we really appreciate them, and I would encourage everyone to... And I would encourage everyone to learn more about the Friends and hopefully join them. And since I'm here, I have to give a special shout out to Mayor Protem Tihar, because she's one of our hardest working Friends volunteers. And just thank you again to the Friends and for letting me recognize them.
Very good. Thank you for attending this evening and for those comments. Additional citizen comments? Then we move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. Councilwoman McClellan, did you still want to remove something?
Yeah, I was just going to remove the C-17171, just so the French students already spoke, but...
Yep, so that will be the third, no, excuse me, the fourth item under New Business.
I will make a motion to approve the remaining items?
Okay, it's been moved by Gearbaugh to approve the consent agenda as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, was that, I'll let McClellan be the second on that one. If that was Ms. Dillon or Mr. Harrow, I'll get you on the next one, ladies. So it's moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by McClellan, to approve the consent agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to public hearing. This is item 17-167. This is special land use for Workout One. The first motion will be a motion to open the public hearing at 8:25 PM.
Second.
Moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Mitchell, to open the public hearing. All those in favor of opening the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the public hearing is now open. Anyone who would like to speak to this issue is encouraged and welcome to come up to the podium.
I'll move to close.
Moved by Gearbaugh to close the public hearing at 8:26 PM, and that was seconded by McClellan. Thank you, ma'am. All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now closed. The third and final motion will be a motion to approve or not to approve the special land use from Section 4.0415B15 of the Celine zoning code for Workout One to allow a health club gymnasium business at 1408 East Michigan Ave in Celine.
So moved.
To approve or to not approve, Ms. Mitchell?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. The memo was pretty straightforward. Are there any questions for staff? Any discussion? Emily, we appreciate your time this evening. Keep up the good work. We wish you continued success. And it's never fun to move, but we wish you the best in your transition from your current location to 1408 East Michigan Ave.
Thank you.
All those in favor of approving the special land use signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to New Business Item 17-168. This is audit report from Plant Moran for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the audit report from Plant Moran for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017.
So moved.
Moved by Gearbaugh to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by McClellan. Any discussion? Then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of acknowledging receipt signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to New Business Item 17-169. This is EDC fiscal year 2017 deficit elimination plan. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the October 3rd, 2017 memo from Administrative Assistant Korfman, and the September 22nd, 2017 memo from City Treasurer Bennett, and to approve and adopt or not to approve the resolution to eliminate the economic development corporation's deficit.
Move to acknowledge and to approve and adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Tihar. Ms. Bennett, do you care to make any comment this evening?
If there's any questions, I'd be happy to ask them. As I explained in the memo, the result of the $647 deficit in the EDC fund is a result of the utilities that were expanded with the streetscape project extending the fancy, not fancy, decorative lights from the Dairy Queen down to the bridge. And that those last utility bills came in after the year end, which in a nutshell landed us in a deficit. And as required by law, we need to file the deficit elimination plan, which as simply stated in my memo, will be contributing the money from general funds, since that's the source for the EDC. And we will be amending that budget and submitting that with a plan to the state of Michigan to meet those requirements.
Very good. Are there any questions for our city treasurer? Ms. Dillon.
So has this been remedied? Is, are there going to be a separate meter for those lights now, or are we just going to adjust the budget accordingly?
All of the utilities will now be paid out of the general fund directly, not going through the EDC.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I should have said that.
Additional questions? Ms. Bennett, thank you. Subsequent discussion on the motion. No, then it's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Tihar, to acknowledge receipt and to approve and adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to New Business Item 17-70. This is request to waive penalties and interest on a tax bill. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 21st, 2017 memo from Treasurer Bennett, and the September 19th, 2017 letter from Sandeep Skadiva, if I mispronounced the name, my apologies, requesting a waiver of the tax penalty and interest on real property tax for the property located at 450 East Michigan Ave. Is there a motion to acknowledge receipt?
Move to acknowledge.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mitchell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Ms. Bennett, your memorando is straightforward. Any questions for the city treasurer? Any discussion? All those in favor of acknowledging receipt signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries. Would anyone like to offer an additional motion or take subsequent action? No, then we'll move on to the item from the consent agenda that was removed and added to New Business. This is item C-17171. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the October 2nd, 2017 email from Jennifer Miller, and to approve the request to fly the French flags at the four corners from October 16th through October 28th, 2017.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Protem Tihar to acknowledge and approve, and it was seconded by McClellan. Assuming, Ms. Tihar, do you have any questions or comments regarding this issue?
I'll just comment that in past experience with the German exchange students, I know that the visiting students really do appreciate seeing the flags, so very much in favor of this.
Very good. Ms. McClellan, anything to add?
This is something that's been done every time, to my knowledge, that the French exchange students have come to visit. It's a wonderful program for the middle school, the high school as well. The students from France come here in the, is it in the fall or the spring?
In the fall.
In the fall. Yeah, sorry. They come in the fall, and then the Celine students go to France in the spring, and they are welcomed just as wonderfully as we hope to do here. I know the French students usually plan a trip to City Hall and tour our facilities and learn about our culture, and are welcome to be our guests. So it's just a gesture of goodwill.
Very good. Additional comments? Ms. Dillon.
I just have clarification on the dates. Are we putting the flags up a week before they arrive and taking them down prior to them leaving? Because the dates don't really jive with what we have here.
Please, Molly, we welcome you to come forward at this time and address the concern made by Councilwoman Dillon.
Absolutely. The students will arrive on October 21st, and then they depart on November 4th. So if the flags could stay up during that period, that would be great.
Okay, yeah. See, we've got, we have them going up on the 16th and taking down on the 28th.
So we'll modify those dates based on...
I just want to make sure that we don't...
Yep, we'll modify the dates in the memo based on what Ms. Lumberkoy just articulated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? No, then it's been properly moved by Tihar, seconded by McClellan, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to New Business Item 17-172. This is parking license agreement with Process Results Incorporated. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the resolution accepting the parking license agreement with Process Results Incorporated as submitted and to authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
Move to approve.
Moved by Gearbaugh to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McClellan. Mr. Campbell, do you want to make a brief statement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. So thank you for the ability to add this on Friday to the agenda. This is in response to the parking lot four that's currently going into rehabilitation. And so the current schedule, as long as we have good weather and no surprises, we're hoping to have parking lot four back in full service as of the evening of Friday, October 20th. This gives us a little bit of time. Originally, the schedule showed about a four-week window of time to take place. This is about a three-week window after it was adjusted after we worked with the engineers and the contractor to get their pencil out and sharpen it up for us. But this is to help, this would of course be after hours parking, because Process Results, they're located right there at the southeast corner of East Henry and South Ann Arbor Street. So they've graciously said that for the hours here, so Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM, I'm sorry, 6:00 PM to 12:00 AM, and then on Saturdays and Sundays, 9:00 AM to 12:00 AM, folks can park there. The city will, for these hours, the city will cover the liability for that. We'll also take on the responsibility for cleaning up any trash that is associated with our, the public use of the parking, as well as towing any vehicles that have been left there overnight, errantly.
Very good. Positive development. Thank you for your work on this, Mr. Campbell. Mr. Gearbaugh, do you have a question?
No, I just wanted to reiterate that I think this is a great approach, and I think this would be something that we look as a model for whenever we need to do this. I think excellent job on this, and thankfully Process Results was cooperating with us or maybe suggested it, I'm not sure, but great job in doing this. Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell?
Sure. I too appreciate these efforts on behalf of our city and increase our parking during this time. Mr. Campbell, can you talk a little bit about the signage and what's involved there? Is it going to stay all the time at Process Results?
Yes. And if it didn't get put up today, hopefully tomorrow, we're working with the road commission's sign department to turn around a sign request pretty rapidly. So hoping if it's not up already, it'll be up tomorrow. But it states the hours that are available for parking, and it also encourages people that if you don't, and that's so many words, that if you don't follow rules, then you would be subject to being towed.
And is that right, Your Honor, if I follow up? Is it like a sandwich board style, or what kind of...
No, it'd be similar to our, about a two-foot by two-foot metal sign, two-sided, of course. And it's similar to the ones that mark our current public lots downtown. Very similar. Those are a little bit larger, I think 24 by 30, I think, inches. So these would be 24 by 24.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. McClellan?
Just a note, the signs were going up today. They were. They were fast when they were going up.
That was the whole thing, to get up today, but I didn't...
And I believe they're orange. I think that their construction...
Right, they're orange and black, similar to the same thing, or similar theme that we used during the Michigan Ave project. May recall, we had the temporary, we had a number of additional temporary signs directing people to the different parking possibilities. And if I could, just really quick, Mayor?
Please.
Just to add, we also have talked for a short term, have a verbal commitment or permission, I should say, from Trinity Lutheran Church right here next to us. And then I'm also going to be meeting with, I've met with them once already, and then meeting with another group of those folks coming up in a couple weeks or two weeks to discuss long-term parking partnership. So we'll be able to report back on that, as well as also, I believe it's the first week of November, I'll be meeting with the folks from St. Paul's.
Very good. Please keep us in the loop on that. Ms. Dillon, leave.
Can you remind me, how many parking spaces are there in the lot right now, in the city lot?
I believe, this is a guess, I think it's about 80, plus or minus.
Okay. Because this is only 15 spots. So we're still going to have a lot of displaced people.
Oh, certainly. Certainly. There's 60 spaces here. Next to us, and this, of course, with any, like with any church, right, it's open as long as there's not a church event going on. And they would, if there's a long-term commitment partnership that's able to come about, we would have the signs that included that language. And I know that, for instance, I know Trinity also has signs that they would put out when there are, when they do have a church event, that says, you know, church event, you know, no public parking or something of that nature. But yes, it's, certainly it's, there are many more on a temporary basis that are not available, but it's, we're, you know, trying to find as many spaces as that we can.
Okay. Now, the people that had long-term parking in the parking lot, have we made accommodations for them elsewhere, or are they just sort of shuffling?
Well, I think, yeah, we have not, just as, right here, I mean, there's, this is after hours parking. Certainly, they can use, as long as it's not a church event, they can use the Trinity Lutheran parking lot. But short of that, we have not created any additional long-term parking.
Thank you very much.
Additional questions or comments, or discussion? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by McClellan, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. Commission, committee, or task force reports from council members. Ms. Mitchell?
Just a note that the historic district commission meeting has been canceled for this month. There's nothing before the commission at this time.
Very good. Reports or other announcements? Mr. Gearbaugh?
I just want to thank everyone. The Harvest Time event that we held last weekend, around the first, I believe, went really well, and the pigs and everything have moved on to their next...
Destination.
Reward, I guess I'd say. And we're looking forward to Christmas at the farm in December.
Very good. Any other reports or announcements? Just very briefly, and I believe I'm speaking for both myself and Mayor Protem Tihar, but we had a marvelous time visiting our sister city in Lindenburg, Germany, these past two weeks. I'll be able to give a more comprehensive update at our next meeting. I'll bring the news article that ran in their local paper featuring our delegation, and I hope by that time that our official gift arrives. It's being mailed to us. It's a beautiful antique piece of stained glass that was presented to us at the welcoming ceremony. So our German friends were tremendous hosts. We are indebted to them for their hospitality and their warmth, and in the future, we would invite and encourage any of you to join us on one of those trips. Am I leaving anything out, Mr. Har?
I think you've hit the high points.
Very good. Excellent. If there are no other reports or announcements, wastewater treatment plant update. Mr. Campbell?
No changes, nothing to update at this point.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the city manager? Ms. Dillon?
I know that Mr. Campbell knows, I have reported several instances of smells within the city. I'm not sure if there is something different being done at the treatment, if it is a weather issue, but there's definitely been some high odor instances lately. And I know that people are no longer reporting it, so I don't want it to be construed that either we don't care or that we're not acknowledging it.
Please.
Yeah, certainly, certainly not. I mean, and I certainly don't disagree. I think people are not reporting as they were a number of months ago, but certainly staff knows it still exists, and we're making every effort to, at least especially the short term, until we can move forward with the long-term fixes to the odor abatement. So, yeah, we certainly do acknowledge that and doing all that we can. I certainly think the stretch here that we had, it was so excessively hot, that certainly did not hurt, or, excuse me, did not help the situation. It hurt it, because I believe, as we all know, that when the temperature of the wastewater increases, the odor increases as well. And so that did not, did not help. But we are continuing to do, to monitor and to do our best to, but we haven't, we're not doing anything different process-wise. I mean, in addition to our short term with the hydrogen peroxide, for instance, at the headworks and those types of things. But as far as the processing it and the waste going through the facility, we haven't done any, haven't changed that process.
Can I just follow up on?
Please.
So just for clarification, then, we are not doing anything right now? We've put some things in place, but we're not doing anything else? So how the process is, is how the process is?
Correct. I mean, we continue to see if there's, we're not aware of any additional steps or treatments, I mean, we continue to see if there's, we're not aware of any additional steps or treatments, but as we continue to look into it, if we come across that, we certainly will entertain those, those ideas.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? No, then let's transition to the general fund balance consideration. Ms. Bennett, are you taking the lead on this?
I am.
Okay, the floor is yours. And I believe this is a follow-up to something that was referenced by our friends at Plant Moran in the annual audit.
Correct. So before you, I have prepared a memo as recommended by the auditors. Our general fund, fund balance policy that was also attached says that we would maintain about $20,000. So in my memo, I pulled together what the excess would be. And then I also gave to you some documentation or some information about where we're at on those unfunded liabilities. The priority order suggests our MERS pension and our other post-employment. And I know we've talked about OPEB. We've talked about our unfunded liability when it comes to MERS. So it's staff's recommendation that we take this excess funds. We, as part of a work session that we had earlier, we had talked about other post-employment benefits for our retirees, the health care. And with the new accounting standards coming on, as the auditors alluded to this evening, with that coming on to our financial statements next year, we are in contract with CBIZ and they are doing a full-blown actuarial of those costs. In the past number of years, I want to say at least five, we've been doing that calculation in-house with a spreadsheet that has been provided to us by the auditing firm, which is completely acceptable accounting standards because of our population size. But at this time, we have hired CBIZ to do a more thorough, you know, a true actuarial on those costs. We do not have those costs yet, but once we get those costs, to compare them to what we had, I think, you know, then we can make the determination which would make more sense. Do we split it, do half towards MERS, half towards other? But at this point, I would, it's staff's recommendation that we consider marking those funds for those liabilities. And I just thought with the audit being presentation tonight, it would be a good time to have this discussion in case you had any questions. And this will be coming back when we get the CBIZ, that's the name of the company that's doing the actuarial for OPEB. And at that time, I guess we could take action on it. Or if there's any questions or any comments that you have, either tonight or I can research and get you some more information.
Very good. Well, Ms. Bennett, I believe you and I and Mr. Campbell briefly discussed this issue subsequent to our initial meeting with the folks at Plant Moran Pressa. I think you did a very nice job summarizing your recommendation in your memo dated September the 22nd, and I strongly support the, your proposal, your suggestion. So I would be inclined to move forward and take official action at subsequent meeting. How does the rest of council feel? Ms. Mitchell?
I really admire the fact that we are looking at this problem. I look at, at the pension, I value our workers and I look at this pension as a promise, that we've made a promise to our workers and that's a promise I would like to work to keep.
Very good. Ms. McClellan?
Yes, I appreciate all your hard work on this and I think it's wise of us to do it.
Very good. Mr. Girba.
I'd like a breakout of what the land sales are and how much of that component of that $518,000 is. Also, what debt we have outstanding in our industrial park from where those land sales occurred. I want to make sure that we've covered our other outstanding liabilities before we necessarily throw anything into our bigger liabilities.
Can you get Mr. Girba that?
Okay, so for clarification's sake, the land sale that we have recorded in these financials would only be for the Zippies. So any debt in that park is what you'd like to see, correct?
Right, whatever would have been in that industrial park.
Okay. All right, yep, I can get that information for you.
Primarily than that means that that $518,000 is mostly the Zippy sales. Correct. Yeah.
Yeah. Good. Ms. Tahar?
Just a question about our fund balance policy. Is there any reason to think that the 20% that we've set should be raised? Excuse me.
I turned to my auditor. Todd has a comment.
I should actually have asked this question during the audit presentation.
Please, Martin.
Here's one giving me the advice.
To be honest, so historically, a lot of communities have always looked at 10% to 20% would be a good window of where you want your fund balance to be. Given what's happened in '09 and 2010, that formula kind of goes out the window, to be honest, just given, you never know what's going to happen. 20%, I would say is pretty good fund balance. However, again, it's hard to tell what the exact number should be. It should be 25%. I know some communities have a higher fund balance, some of them have much lower. I've seen as little as 5% to 10%. But again, I would say anywhere between 10% and 20%, I would always err on the higher side. If you wanted to go a little bit higher, you can do that. The other thing is too, is on the pension and OPEB or any other liability, if you decide to designate a portion of the fund balance, it's not something that you can't undesignate back later on. So you could designate it at this point, as long as you don't remit the money to a trust, you can use that money still for a different purpose if something does happen. So it's just one of those things that you can still keep an eye on it until you make that transfer to an actual separate trust. And at that point, to be honest, if, even if you transfer the money, you can utilize it for expenses that are occurring. For example, if you did it for pension, you could put the money in the trust instead of paying money out of the general fund to pay the contribution or for the current retirement payments or especially OPEB, the current retirees' health care benefits, you could use that money out of the trust to pay that current years instead of using it out of the general fund. So there's different things you can do still. So you're not necessarily tying your money completely, but to some extent you are.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Dillon?
Actually, my question is very similar to Ms. Tahar, so I'll just piggyback on the left. Why would we have let it go up to 25 then if we're willing now to drop back? Were we just being ultra-conservative and we want to drop back now? I mean, we obviously had a reason for letting it grow. And so I guess what I want to know is, has that caution gone away?
Okay, so a couple things I need to clarify.
Okay.
The 5% was a result of this year's audit.
Okay.
So at the end of last year, we weren't at 25%.
Okay.
It's because of these numbers. And Mr. Girba, to your point, the Zippies sale did not happen in this fiscal year of the audited 17. So that 518 is not the Zippy sale. That was recorded in July. After we got done, I'm like, wait. And Joanne helped me confirm. So this 518 is not part of the Zippy sale. The only land sale in there would be the Monroe Street property, which was not $500,000. So would you still like that debt number?
No, at this point. I just wanted to make sure where that 5...
Yep.
Then that means we have another $500,000 in this year, which would make our fund balance go up to almost another...
And FY '18, the Zippies car wash will be reflected. The other thing that, to point out to the council is that we do have a signed fund balance from the excess revenue that they, the auditors alluded to from the local community stabilization act, the extra proceeds of that money that we have put aside and assigned for legislative changes. So this is in our own, I mean, we have, we are assigning some of those funds to cover some of those unknown expenses as well. But that does not fall into this unassigned fund balance that we're referring to. So this would be separate.
If I could clarify one thing, I, when I mentioned that you could put money to the MERS trust, technically it'd be OPEB, right? So just want to make a clarification on this, both of them.
Let me stick with Councilwoman Dillon. Do you have additional questions?
No, that'll be fine for now. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Girba?
So just to provide clarification, so then Zippy car wash, plant sales are going to be in this year, plus the maple oak closing and all that.
Yes.
So the only, like you said, it was fairing. So we're basically, if we had an even budget, or we have a break-even budget this year, we're not, we're only going to continue to increase our fund balance for next year. So I think your recommendations now make more sense from the perspective of I don't have to worry so much about that debt until this coming year. One of my concerns is that whole issue of how long we've carried debt on those industrial parks and what potentially the state may do in terms of trying to come up with a $10 billion shortfall.
Right. And also, as you may recall, the, the LDFA has started repaying that loan that we're also assigning that fund balance as well for those type of consideration as well, not included in this numbers as well.
Let's do this, Ms. Bennett. Why don't you proceed with, at the appropriate time, having this come before us as an action item on the agenda? And I think it might be prudent at that time to also review with council the fund balance policy that we initially adopted in 2013, I believe, either 2013 or 2014, which I will remind my colleagues was the first time the city implemented a fund balance policy. And maybe we can walk through why we came to the conclusions that we did and if there are modifications that need to be made, we'll make them. Does that sound okay?
Yep. And would that appropriate time be when we receive the CBIZ report for the OPEB?
I think so, unless there's objection from the dais. Yes, let's proceed with that.
Okay.
Okay?
Perfect.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'll be back.
Martin, we appreciate the additional comments.
No problem, thank you.
Anything else to be brought up under the discussion portion of tonight's agenda? Then we move on to the second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, may comment their question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess, I'm sorry, was there an agreement that the audit is going to be on the city website? I didn't hear anything. And it is quite complicated and I do think as a taxpayer, you should have it. The other thing is, as far as parking, the apartments that are going to be above, I think what used to be Manjamos, but the new apartments going up, I know they're going to have to have overnight parking because this is going to be their apartments. I would hope that the taxpayers are not going to be providing the full-time parking for their apartments. And I know you don't answer anything tonight, but I would hope that this would be a question that could be answered in the future. The other thing is, we were talking about streetlights. Now the cost of the streetlights is going into, coming from the general fund. We used to have Tifa, EDC, LEFA, that kind of cost came out of there, along with all the downtown baskets and Christmas and other things. And I guess I'm wondering why at this point it's coming out of the general fund opposed to, I think part of the district of downtown is in one of those districts. Thank you. The audit is important.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. The audit has been online for a number of years. It will continue to be online and a hard copy will be available at the...
Thank you.
What is it, the kiosk? Yeah. Mr. Olson, please.
John Olson, Seline Area Chamber Commerce. I just wanted to remind everyone that on the 26th of October, we'll be honoring our businesses of the year. Our small business, again, to remind everyone, is Brute Awakenings. Our large business is Story Point. And we have a lifetime achievement award for Bill Mangle, who, from our own chamber. We're hoping to get the reservations closed out by this week so we can let Stonebridge do some planning.